Well, we, you know, I know the city was looking at that deal and really Regions really killed it for them. Um, because Regions just had such a good lease with those guys, they just wouldn't, they wouldn't give it up.
Hello, Kristin?
Oh, they didn't use very little. Actually, they ended up getting pushed over to just a very small, they used about a third of what they had before. They only used like five thousand square feet, that fifteen thousand on the first floor now. And that's how Chris got interested. He actually did the remodeling for Regions. And that's kind of what he, that's what he does. One of his divisions, his company, they remodels Sanovis, Capital One, Regions, that's what they do.
Did you hear any?
I'm excited. We're super excited. Nervous when I signed that note, that was a lot of money, uh, that I just obligated myself to, but excited.
There he is.
Hello, sir. Hey.
Just in time.
Three seconds. On my nose, dude, good timing.
Well, the big clock already says six o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. We have a quorum, obviously, so let's get started. So, we all have the agenda, and so I will entertain an adoption of the agenda.
We do. I will make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Are you right here? Okay, we're off and running. All business. You all have received the minutes that Kirsten prepared for us from our last meeting. Any, um, changes or comments?
No comments, no change as far as I can tell.
Go ahead, your motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I make, go ahead. I'll make the motion until we approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. New business. Ron, you're on.
Uh, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, tonight, we only have one application. It's for S W North Villarica LLC. Um, they're requesting a rezoning of a two point seven one acre tract. Uh, it's currently a vacant parcel from single-family agricultural A G to commercial low-density C one. Um, the applicant has also requested variances from the city council as well, but of course, because of, uh, variances being under the jurisdiction of the city council, um, they are, uh, not up for any type of, um, I guess, uh, vote or discussion tonight, um, just the rezoning portion. Um, and it's really it. Um, it's in the, as far as the comprehensive plan, um, in land use category, it is in the medical activity centers' character area. Um, and from a staff perspective, this is the highest and best use of the land, uh, compared to the single-family home that's currently there. It's, um, it's a dilapidated, um, house that's practically falling in, so it's not exact, all the way vacant yet. Um, but it's basically falling in on itself. Um, there's no, no one that actually lived there. I'm not sure when the last person has lived there.
Can I ask a question here? So, that's a revision to the old agenda I had over the previous edition? You know, there was nothing said about the South Harbor?
No, that's an old, that, that's the May.
Oh, that's, oh, I'm sorry. Looked at the wrong one, okay. I apologize. Yeah, go ahead.
So, it's pretty, I guess it's pretty, uh, cut and dry, um, just a, a regular rezoning, um, request. So, if you have any questions, I want to answer.
How will the roundabout affect this property?
So, um, on the site plan, uh, there is a, uh, a drawing of where the proposed roundabout would be located. So, there would be some, um, taking of property that the property owner is aware of that, the developer is aware of that. There would be some usage of, um, property right at the intersection of Pumpkin Town and Dallas Highway. Um, so it's, um, they already have made provisions for that roundabout, um, and they're, uh, and they've been in contact with the D O T to move that forward.
Ron, this may be future thinking here, um, and you may or may not know. How does that overlay with proposed bypass?
So, the bypass would actually, uh, cut across, um, I believe that's, um, forget my streets here now.
Cause that's Harrell right there.
Harrell, yes. Um, it'll, it'll cut across Harrell and it'll come down to a point in, and if you can look on the screen there, it's, um, the northeast corner. There's a huge giant lot, um, that's contiguous, yes. It, so it'll come in right down, um, in that area there. Wish I had a pointer to help you out there, but it's not going to be at the intersection of Pumpkin Town. Yep.
Is that, is that what's shown on page nineteen, the last page?
Let's see.
That's Jaybird.
That is correct, yes, on page nineteen.
And Stotmar, the next one to the right.
Yeah.
Yes. So, a, as we may be aware, there, that means it would be two roundabouts. There would be one at Pumpkin Town, and then there would be one at the new bypass.
Now, we recently approved a zoning change on, um, what's the name of the road?
Harrell.
Harrell, Harrell Road, um, for a, a resident that wanted to rezone, and, you know, we, we changed that because of the medical facilities. Um, and yet, we're saying that this doesn't affect, isn't affected by the, the medical. Shouldn't that all be considered medical facilities as a best use?
Medical and professional.
Yeah, so, so on the last page here of the staff report, page nineteen, um, you could see the area that is considered medical character area. Um, and if I remember correctly, the case that you're talking about, it would, it was a, uh,
It's a private.
Private residential home, single-family home, right?
Can you pull that map back up you had?
The, the side.
Yes, ma'am, the one we looked, yeah, the one we had just before.
Yep.
You had it for, I think, if I remember right, sorry, it was this house right here, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
I believe so. It was an appeal application to the, um, November twenty twenty zoning ordinance designation.
It started with two, and then it was one, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. There was a cross street from Ashbrook, uh, and it was behind, uh, Willbrook.
I mean, what I mean, there was two applicants that I think, in the, in the initial, that initially filed the appeal or.
And that one, that one dropped out, and that one stayed, and we, I remember.
That's how, that's my recollection as well, um, but I don't recall what we, uh, what we zoned it to. Let me see if I have that.
If I remember correctly, Ron, I think we kept it as residential because it was in keeping with the neighborhood, and we didn't believe that it should be zone medical or, I think they were asking for commercial designation, I think is what they were asking for, if I remember.
I, I think you're right. I think you are correct.
Of course, they weren't at the intersection, which they weren't at a corner.
So, it let, so if we were to have, uh, changed that over to the office medical, um, zone, that would have created a non-conformity, uh, being that the property is not currently used for any office uses, no medical uses, institutional uses, um, just a single-family home. Um, so that would create a non-conforming use. Um, but in this particular case, the one that we have tonight, um, a general, uh, like a retail stores and the like of, of other types of commercial as well, would be, uh, permitted on that site in the medical character area. Um, it's actually the, the, I think on page four, we have a chart of, um, I'm sorry, it's not four. Uh, all right, so it's page ten, actually, um, table two. Um, you could see the total number of, um, appropriate zoning categories that are suggested in the comprehensive plan. And the C one zone, which is what the applicant is applying for, is one of those recommended, uh, appropriate zones. So, um, with that, small-scale commercial, I actually underlined it there too as well in the paragraph. Small-scale commercial and retail uses are something that is recommended by the comp plan.
And I was going to ask you on the color map that we have here with the colors on it, the blue and the yellow and the green. The yellow is residential, the blue is the medical, is the green the actual commercial designation currently?
No, the green is, uh, agricultural, single-family.
Okay, so, all right. All right, so.
So, this would be the only, um, use in this, this stretch until you get past, uh, I believe that's McCurdy Drive, um, before you can hit another C one zone. Um, so this would be the only one that is commercial. Uh, but it is a, a use that, being that the character area is what it is, um, it would support, um, that zoning category. So, we would, we went ahead and, um, recommended approval.
Now, there is a, there is a drugstore that lies between, on the left-hand side of the street, between Harrell and McCurdy, on the left-hand side.
That's right.
Uh, but there is nothing on the right-hand side past up to McCurdy. There is a drugstore that lies there. But I'm just saying, I guess this, and I, I have to ask, agree with John here, that it's a non-conforming, and we just told the other people no a couple of months ago, cause it's non-conforming, this seems to be non-conforming as well.
Um, right, so they're trying to rezone to a zone that would be conforming, um, which in the other case, it was a, it was, it was conforming previously, but they were trying to go to a zone that would make it non-conforming.
And, and I'm, I'm just going to try to recall, did that make it to council? Did that?
Yes.
They did go to council, okay.
That was an appeal.
There is a, what, a long-term care facility?
There is, Ash, uh, Ash, which recently sold, but yeah, Ashbrook's back there. I think it's called Ashbrook, am I right?
Yeah, I believe.
I'm making mind in the name, Ashbrook. There's Willbrook and Ashbrook, and yeah, Willbrook's the mental health, and Ashbrook's the, the facility. It's back, it's got, got like seventy acres back there, and it's back off the road.
But again, it's in that same general area.
It's literally right there, that's its driveway right there.
Right.
It's back there.
Is there, is there a, this might sound like a ridiculous, ridiculous question. Is there a density requirement for Dollar Generals, like per thousand?
Um, so, it would be a, well, it would be an intensity, but, uh, cause commercial uses use intensity, density uses residential. I know it's all planning gar, garbage jargon.
I mean, we are literally, if you think of three oh one eight oh zip code, I think there's what, forty thousand residents, this will be like the seventh Dollar General.
So, this is the, you know, the, the interesting thing about this, and I did meet with the applicant, um, quite a bit, and he, and he is here tonight also to answer some of your questions. But he, uh, did note that this Dollar General would be a bit larger than, um, a, a typical Dollar General that they build. And it's supposed to be a more, um, upscale product, I guess, uh, upscale, uh, construction, it looks like, and it appears, compared to all the Dollar Generals I've ever seen, um, but also some of the things that they're actually carrying. So, uh, they'd be carrying some grocery items, um, home furnishings and things of that nature too, so it wouldn't be your typical Dollar General store. We, I did measure, um, our closest Dollar General to this one is the one on Connors Road, um, so that one is about a mile away, um, a little, maybe a little bit over a mile.
There's one up in New Georgia, which is about three miles, four miles from here.
Yeah, um, and then they have the new one that was constructed on, uh, near Industrial Boulevard. So, um, that, these two stores, the one that they just, uh, just built, and this current one that they're proposing, would be different in that sense. And this one would be a higher-end product than.
And I visit lots of Dollar Generals on my travel. I mean, I go into myself, and it doesn't matter if they built them on Tuesday, on Thursday, you're going to be stepping over something in aisle three. Uh, it's just how it is. Uh, and I visit them all over.
You say that.
Uh, I can't. Uh, I visit them all over, and I, I'm, I'm a customer, uh, but it's the truth.
It's funny, I, I just went into a Dollar General, actually, um, just the other day, uh, Thursday last week, and it was exactly that. I, I was tripping over everything. It was, everything was completely out of place, um, so I, I definitely understand the sentiments there, but.
I visit a lot of them through my travels, courthouses and places I visit on a weekly basis, because they are convenient, and they are on thoroughfares, and they generally have the things you need quickly. Uh, you can get in and out. That's, that's the, that's their market. They make a lot of money doing it.
And speaking to that, um, your travels and everything, I mean, Dollar General offers a, a few more options than the convenience stores do that are, uh, in between, you know, on either side of, of that, where this proposal is.
I do.
Now, is Dollar General and Family Dollar, is that part of the same corporate?
I'm not sure. I would have to defer to the applicant.
I think so, but I'm not sure. Um, and did this, I guess since it's gotten this far, city council never did pass. There, there was at one time, I think, a move to, to, uh, pass an ordinance that set a maximum density of, uh, retail and things like that within a certain radius, or, or the, no more than X number of the same kind or same brand of store.
Um, I, I haven't heard that. I know that Douglas County has done that recently. Um, they've now have a, a moratorium on Dollar Stores. Um, so I'm not really sure if that's something that we're looking to do or not. I just simply don't know. It could be in the future.
But you haven't heard that it has, so, okay.
Haven't, and we just constructed one, so unless it happened in between the, the construction of the last one and the proposal of this one, I haven't been aware of that.
And you said there was one about a mile away down Pumpkin Town. There's actually two. There's that one there, kind of at the corner of Connors, uh, and, uh, Pumpkin Town. And then about a hundred and fifty or two hundred yards up the street, on Connors, there's another one.
Well, that's a difference between Family Dollar and Dollar General.
Isn't that part of the same family, though?
That was my question.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
I think it is.
Um, yeah, I mean, a lot of cities around the country are doing moratoriums. I actually talked to the applicant about moratoriums as well.
Well, I just, I wouldn't want, uh, you know, a public's grocery store every hundred yards, or a, um, Holiday Inn, you know, every half-mile. I mean, it's just, you know, you get to a saturation point, and you, every time you turn around, you know, that's all you see.
I think, and one thing I worry about, you're setting yourself up for some vacant, you know, some customized vacant buildings in ten or twelve years.
Yeah.
Well, I, and I, and I'm no attorney. I know we have one attorney here tonight, but, um, you know, I just, I do question the legality of doing something like that. Um, you know, discriminating against different types of commercial uses. Um, you know, I know cities, some cities do it all the time, but it would be just the same, same type of thing as if you discriminated against assembly uses. Um, like theaters and churches and things of that nature all need to be ca, kept kind of in the same categories throughout the zoning ordinance. Um, there's some exceptions to that, but, um, for the most part, cities are now kind of waking up to that, and, and states are all, across all fifty states are, are basically treating it the same way now. Um, assembly uses, you can't really say a church can't go here, but you can allow theater in the same exact place. It's like, what's the difference between a theater and a church? Um, you're, it's still a large assembly use.
But I'm not sure that we really can take that into consideration in our decision.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that's up to the, to the company.
Yeah.
So, I kind of, I kind of thought about that as well, you know, because these Dollar Generals are popping up everywhere, and what's going to happen? Or how many, you know, are they, the company could restructure, you know, none of that's in, is, is, in my opinion, in our, is for our consideration. But what I do like is where staff is, you know, has a good plan here. I mean, if it wasn't a Dollar General, that building could be a lot of different uses.
I mean, I think, I mean, if I'm looking at it, I think, I, I haven't agreed with Ron here. I think it qualifies. Um, it's going to be a roundabout, it's going to be a highly trafficked area, it's going to be commercial. Uh, I'm not a fan of another Dollar General coming to my sa, my city, not because I particularly dislike Dollar General, I just would like to see something else. But at that being said, I, I don't, I mean, I don't see anything we can disapprove of.
I have, I have a concern to address to you, Ron.
Sure.
You recommend approval of the zoning change, yet you recommend denial of the, the variances. Now, if the variances are not approved, what does this do to the approval of the zoning change? Because zoning change is for Dollar General.
We don't have a voice on the variances.
I, I realize that, but I'm saying, still, if the variances by the council are not approved, where does this stand?
So, um, in that case, the applicant will be required to follow the zoning ordinance, uh, the way that it's written, um, today. There would be no special permissions to deviate from any of the requirements inside, or any of the requirements that they've applied for. Um, however, um, the applicant can come back with another, uh, variance application and, um, and maybe, and state their case over again in maybe a different way, or, um, apply for lesser relief. Um, all of the variances would have to be looked at individually for their own merits. Um, typically, on applications where I have a rezoning and variances, um, it, it's staff's position, and it's really the, the city's position in general, that, um, we shouldn't be giving an approval for, or I'm sorry, um, giving a recommendation for variances at all, unless it's something that's strictly for like topographic reasons, just things that are totally out of the applicant's control, um, that there's just nothing that they can do about. Um, however, it's, it was pretty clear, and, and at least in my review, that, uh, all of these variances are stemming from Dollar General's boilerplate plan, interior plan that they have for their buildings. Um, and I, that just doesn't really rise to the level of, um, the detriments versus, the benefits versus the detriments to me, and that's what I have to look at. So, um, with saying that, um, the city council, I, I expect them to, um, either approve or deny the variances, not only based off the benefits versus detriments, but also just the practicality of issuing, um, those variances for a better product. Um, so that's not something that I, that I, that I think I have the discretion to do, so, and, and as far as a recommendation is concerned. But I, definitely the city council does, so, um, I kind of leave those things up to them. So, that's just our internal position on variances.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, yes. Jason Fritz.
Could we, uh, hear from the applicant?
Sure.
Please state your name and, um.
My name's Jason Fritz, um, with a company called Sullivan Wickley. We're the proposed developer of the building and the applicant. Um, we build about fifteen to twenty Dollar Generals per year across Georgia. Uh, in this case, this, uh, Dollar General comes to us, and typically, they tell us where they want to go and put a store. And we build the store and then lease it to them on a fifteen-year initial term, and then I think they have four, four or five-year options on top of that. So, they could potentially be there for, you know, thirty-five years at least, and, you know, for longer if the, if it holds up, so. Um, Ron, did a great job, um, you know, kind of giving you a breakdown. This store is going to be a ten thousand six hundred and forty square-foot Dollar General. And the one we just built over on the highway one oh one bypass is nine thousand one hundred. So, this would be about, uh, uh, you know, six, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred square foot larger. And what that allows us to do, or allows Dollar General to do, I should say, is it's, they're adding groceries and fresh food sections now. Um, so even the store that was built over on one oh one won't have all the fresh food sections that this one will. And if you're okay with it, I can, like to give you, gentlemen, a few items to look at.
Now, you are not part of Dollar General, you just built for them.
We're the developer, and then we, we build the building and own it, and then lease it to them.
Well, I've got this.
Yeah, we got, we did.
Here you go, you can have it back.
Produce.
We got the photographs as well. Yeah, he sent those to us earlier today.
So, this intersection, and I think what has caught Dollar General's eye is that it is a roundabout, and there's such heavy traffic at this intersection. I think there's close to twelve thousand cars per day at Pumpkin Town, which is why they're doing this, this Q R P, quick response project to, to put in the, the roundabout. Um, so it's heavy, I mean, it's heavy traffic. It's not, it's not something where you want a home on it. Typically, to have a home fronting a, you know, a high-traffic area like that. Um, and the, the future land use plan calls for it to be community crossroads and medical district, which is a combination. Community crossroads calls for, uh, retail and different types of uses within that intersection. So, the Pumpkin Town and Dallas Highway intersection is a community crossroads designation with the city. Uh, and that's, within the community crossroads, it also says, uh, to, you can place, uh, neighborhood commercial or G C, which those two, I guess, were just changed when they redid the rezoning this year, so they converted them to C one and I think C two. So, we went with the less intense district of C one, um, because that's what their, the future land use plan calls for, said to be commercial. So, that was one commerce, one question I wanted to address, um, upfront. Um, DG chooses these areas because they serve the, the neighborhoods. They're not trying to pull people off of highway twenty and, and, you know, five miles away. They're, they're, they, the customers live in and around this area here, so that's why they choose these intersections, um, because there was a question about density. Um, you know, they have all these convenient items. They try to kind of out-position Walmarts and be an alternative for people that they don't have to drive, you know, ten miles to go to a Walmart to, to pick up some items, where they can just go out their door and down the street and pick up the same items, milk or, you know, groceries, anything, you know, deodorant, whatever it is, they can go down their street now and just, and pick it up. So, that's how they choose things. And the store over on one oh one is doing very well, and they said it's, it's doing well, so let's, let's go over here and take another look at this area. Um, and that's kind of where we came in and, uh, put the property under contract. It's owned by, uh, an estate, Luis Haynes Estate, um, and they had it up for sale. And, you know, they agreed to go into contract with us to, with the intent of us trying to rezone it for a commercial. Um, between the two bypasses, or the two roundabouts, I should say, there's going to be a median. So, that median, it won't allow any cross-access anywhere between Pumpkin Town and the new bypass road. Um, so what we're proposing is our entrance would be off of Harrell Road, and we would stub out access to the neighboring property to our right for future cross-access, so you wouldn't need to have future, um, intersections, uh, in between the two, uh, roundabouts. So, you know, we're trying to, per the plan, the comprehensive plan, it calls for, uh, you know, interactivity and pedestrian-friendly. So, that's, you know, our attempt to kind of, um, do the interconnectivity and improve that, so that you don't have to have a bunch of different driveway cuts along between these two new, uh, roundabout areas. Um, we're also doing, I think the, uh, uh, plan calls for amenity areas. We're going to do a, a pocket park up front, um, along the corner, right in the hard corner there, and then the architecture, obviously, will be, uh, if the variances are approved in, uh, a few weeks at the council hearing, the variances would allow us to do basically the same kind of look of this store on this, on this site. And that's all because the code changed in between when this store was built and the new one. And there's certain things in there that the new code requires, like windows, and I know you guys aren't voting on this, but they want windows along the fronts, you know, on the sides of the stores, and for a lot of retail stores, they put their shelving units up against the walls. So, you'd be looking at the back of shelving units. So, we're proposing, you know, decorative kind of brick look patterned windows, and we have all the cornices, and, um, that's the main reasoning for those variances. It's, it's mainly architectural. Um, it's nothing, uh, other than that, really, so.
What would your feeling be if those variances, though, are not approved?
Um, it's, it's obviously would be, it's, it's kind of a, it's not, uh, it's a safety thing, because you'd have these windows backing up the shelving units that somebody could break through to get into a store if they wanted to versus a brick, nice brick window, you know, you don't need all these windows, uh, other than, you know, as long as you like the look of the bricked-up window that we've done on the Villarica store, versus a clear glass window looking at the back of a shelf. I just think it's in the best interest of, if I lived near there, I wouldn't want to look at the back of a shelving unit when I'm driving by. I'd rather look at the bricked-up window look that they have with the shutters and, and all that stuff. Um, I just think that personally, that's a better look versus looking at the back of a shelving unit.
Is there any reason that you couldn't do some internal shifting around so that those windows are not part of the shelving?
We can't. I mean, Dollar General has their own marketing and, um, internal, um, I forgot the name of their division that does all that, that stocks everything. But they, they're basically, they're an assembly line, you know, they, they come in, they, they build out their store, put the shelves up and, you know, fill the shelves, and then move on to the next store. So, um, getting them to, or asking them to do something to, so you don't have the shelving up against the windows would be, I mean, it'd be next to impossible to get them to agree to do something different than that. They'll just say, just go down the ra, road and find a different store, essentially. Um, so, um, yeah, I mean, I, the, we could put windows in. I mean, there's, there's no problem putting windows in. It's just, I don't think it's what the neighborhood wants and what the, the city would want to see, um, essentially.
Anybody else have any questions?
So, how many, I've got a couple of questions. So, how, how long have you, say you do a fifteen-year lease with Dollar General. Have you had any experiences since your company's been doing this where they've defaulted?
Default? No, never. Dollar General's, I think it's B-plus credit. Yeah, I've never seen them, no, they don't default. What, what happens is you'll see old Dollar Generals closing. You'll see these old ugly metal ones that they built back in the day. Horrible. I mean, and, and you'll see them closing and we're relocating them into new stores like these ones that we're building. And this is their new prototype. They've done extremely well since COVID, because they've been an alternative for people to go buy toilet paper. They've done extremely well. So, no, they're not going anywhere. I mean, I'd never say never. Who knows? I mean...
And if they were, if they were to do something, your, your company still owns the property.
Yeah.
And you would adapt it to whatever you needed to do to get another tenant in there.
So, that building, and what's great is why investors like to buy these buildings, because Dollar General maintains everything. But the depth of the building is, this one is seventy-six feet deep. So, a good retail building is anywhere between seventy and eighty feet deep, because it allows you to bring it up into multiple spaces, and it's rectangular. So, you can develop a twenty-foot-wide space, seventy-foot, you know, seventy-some foot wide, and you could put a nail salon in there, or you could do a, you know, a chicken salad chick, or you can put walls into these units, split them up if you have to, easily. That's what they're...
And the bricks, the bricks would come out of the windows if that were to happen?
Yeah, they'd have, they had to put in storefronts, yeah.
That was gonna be my next question. It's like, okay, so, let's just say something else happens here. You got bricked-up windows. Does that bill, does your construction allow for those bricks to come out and windows to go in?
Yeah, it's a brick facade, and, and their code honestly wouldn't allow for you to do that. You'd have to go through their, their whole redevelopment ordinance, and you couldn't just put a, a door on the side of the building. That, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. I think fire code allows, requires a certain amount of windows, too, but...
Tom, you have any questions?
I'm good.
Mac? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody have any more questions for Ron? Do I hear a motion to approve or disapprove this rezoning request? Yeah, we probably do need a public hearing.
Yes, yes.
Do you have any, any comments to, to make?
Yes, my question is, how many Dollar Generals?
Up here, please.
Yeah, would you come to the microphone? Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Brenda Andrews, and my mother's home is 974 Dallas Highway, which is adjacent to the 950 facility. My question is, how many Dollar Generals do we need in Villa Rica? I know of three already. And I'm all for progress. I mean, you know, I know that property's gonna go commercial, or should go commercial, my property should. And I'd like to see something really nice go in there. And I'm not putting Dollar General down, but if you look at Dollar Generals outside the building, inside is a mess, outside's a mess. So, I mean, it's, it's just, I don't know. It seems to take away from the facility. And I'd hate to see people driving into Villa Rica seeing that on the way in and thinking, well, let's just bypass Villa Rica. We don't really wanna go downtown. So, that's my question.
Thank you very much. Well, that's our entire public. Back to the, to the commission?
If I could just add one thing also, we, just to clarify the staff's position, we recommended approval with condition. So, there is one condition that we have in here for the rezoning portion, which is to provide a landscape buffer and sufficient screening from the adjacent residentially-zoned areas as indicated by staff and the Villa Rica zoning ordinance. So, the Villa Rica zoning ordinance, as we know, already has screening requirements and buffering requirements. But in, in the off-chance that we wanted more screening, or less screening in some alternative universe, we wanna reserve that right up front as a part of the, the rezoning. Where you may have seen this actually on other projects as well, where we've also asked for that. I'm trying to think which one it was. It's escaping me now, but we did, we did the same thing, but we're gonna, you're gonna start seeing that coming forward on the front end. For now, that's kind of like my staple thing to have.
That is the one out in Fullerville on Second Street or Third Street, where they were putting industrial?
Yes, thank you. I was thinking Fullerville, but I couldn't place it.
Where they were gonna cut the street off, but they were gonna build a buffer between the...
That's right, yeah. So, we wanted to make sure we reserve that for the future. Anytime that we have a more intense use next to residential, single-family homes, we're gonna start doing that.
Okay, those are the conditions that you outlined on page fifteen, I think.
So, Ron, I've got a question for you on these, these other two parcels, on Mrs. Andrews' parcel, and also the brick, the brick ranch over there. Those, are those all, are those two parcels also for sale? Your properties for sale?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to place which one.
This is the one we're talking about.
Macy's, Macy's Mama David.
Both of these are on the market.
Mark's Mama David.
Okay.
Yeah, Mark's.
Mark's Mama David. I used to know if I lived on the road.
So, my que, that leads me to my question about the interparcel connectivity. Do we, is there a challenge there with Mrs. Andrews' property and the proposal of the interparcel connectivity? It looks like it would be up there by sixty-one.
So...
How's that gonna work?
Cross, cross parcel connectivity and shared parking is something that is encouraged in the zoning ordinance. It's not required as a part of any development, but it is always encouraged to limit the number of curb cuts coming in and out of, especially a main artery like Dallas Highway. So, it's, I'm not sure if it, if it's premature, if it's smart thinking up front or not. I haven't, just haven't waited on requiring any type of cross-access from this point. But if you were to take a look at their site plan, I'm not sure how much space there is to do that other than that front parking lot, being that they have a septic drainage field in the rear. And there's no developments that are proposed for these other lots. So far, that's on that same stretch. So... You know, I'm sure, you know, I would probably wanna talk with the applicant at some point and see if that's something that even, that would make sense for them, or if they would allow something like that. Dollar General would allow it.
Oh, yes.
Sure. I, if, if I may, we would gladly, if you wanted to make that a condition and provide interparcel access, that's fine by us. I mean, it's, it only helps us, and it's a huge value that to those other neighboring owners, because they won't have, if they don't get that access, and they wanna sell it for commercial or developed, they're gonna have right-in, right-out access only, because that's gonna be a median between those two roundabouts there. And that significantly hurts, you know, because you can't take a left turn into the side or a left turn out. So, their only way to get a left turn in or out would be from Harrell Road to where I'm funded. And you usually want your access to the front of the building. I mean, it just makes no sense. It's where your apartment's gonna be anyway, so... But I'd, we'd be happy with that in a condition for future interparcel access to be allowed with the neighboring owners.
And the re, the reason I was asking that is because, you know, the public comment, Mrs. Andrews, sounded like she was speaking against the Dollar General going in, and she's the neighbor. And now we're talking about screening, interparcel access. I mean, how's all this gonna come together?
Well, once, once they, if they were sold their property and then they would have to come in here for a rezoning, those buffers go away. So, they would, they could, just all they have to do is connect their drive to that drive, and they could go. There's some grading that they'll have to do, because there's a little bit of a topo change here between the two lots, if I remember correctly. But, but for our, all our incentive purposes, it's a twenty-four-foot ride to the driveway, a course driveway that they can connect to in the future. Now, it's gonna stub out before that buffer. I think we have a thirty-foot buffer that we're required to put in. So, that, that driveway will stub out on our property, thirty feet short of the property line. But then they would have, and I thought this was a condition, actually, but they would have the right to connect to that driveway in the future. And that's, that's to everybody, but that's it. Like I said, if you don't want a bunch of access drives along Dallas Highway there, it's better just to have the one, you know, from Harrell Road and maybe get a right-in, right-out somewhere down the road further a little bit that everybody can share in, too. But, but that would be an issue for us. It's, it's valuable.
Thank you.
So, it would be, and if that does come to fruition, the buffer that is proposed right now in the zoning ordinance is a thirty-foot buffer width, and that would be reduced back down to a ten-foot buffer if it was C1 and C1 next to each other. So, that's a pretty dramatic reduction. So... But by that time, obviously, the thirty-foot buffer is in, and it's all on one property. It's not only the new property that's being, that would be constructed, which would be Mrs. Andrews' property. So...
Which increases their usable land, because they don't have to put in a thirty-foot buffer on their property line next to the Alameda now. They may have to put in a ten-foot. So, they, if we're builders' perspective, they're getting a lot more yield if they get a twenty-foot wider building on that block.
Okay, that's all the zone residential.
Currently, yes. AG.
In fact, the whole property's along Dallas.
Yeah.
Well, we cannot consider the implications of the variances.
Right.
We cannot consider the fact that this is yet another Dollar General coming into the community. Our attention is on the rezoning. So, it is the commission's pleasure with conditions.
I move that we approve this request in accordance to, with the conditions attached to the write-up by staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I just don't see where we have a choice on.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
With concerns.
Yes.
Okay, that's the only new business. Staff comments again. Back to Ron.
Yeah, so, no staff comments again this, this month. We have a number of applications going to the July thirteenth meeting for city council, ones that you guys have already seen already, Edge Road, for example, and a couple others. So, this should be, it'll be probably a huge meeting with a lot of different applications on there. The Historic Preservation Commission, if you're not aware, is also, has also voted to send off a national application for a historic district for the downtown area, for a unified historic district. It's been a long time coming, I'm sure. We have a lot of great buildings downtown that are worthy of preservation. And the local historic district, which gives the HPC its powers to, to essentially give certificates of appropriateness for those areas, is up for discussion. It was up for discussion in May. It has now, the, the city council's decided to table that until the next meeting. So, we have to basically, the HPC has to kind of do it all over again until, so we can get it to the July meeting. There's a couple of things in the actual HPC ordinance, their governing ordinance, that the city council is looking to either get more direction on from the city attorney or have change potentially. So, that's kind of held up the designation ordinance. So, I'm not...
I would like, speaking of historical preservation.
Sure.
When they begin to dig up this lot, which they will, I'd be very interested to see what's there for this lot. The corner lot right there is very, the history on it's pretty good, it's wrote up on it, so very historic lot. People have been living there for close to three hundred years. It's been inhabited by somebody for close to two hundred years. It was a gather's place for a long time. There's photographs from the Civil War taken near there, and I've seen floating around in publications. There's rumor has it that the local regiment that signed up for the Civil War actually gets at that, at that location. So, I'd be interested what they find there when they start digging up. Maybe something called West Georgia about, like, the archaeology or something, if they would be willing to do a little digging before.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because the house hasn't been there. It's only about nineteen ten, nineteen twenty. It was a house that stood there.
Before that, yeah.
Be very interesting, because that was kind of the crossroads originally. It'd be interesting what's there.
Yeah. So, city council have that up for, this application up for consideration, Edge Road, Rock Haven Homes, again, the HPC's governing ordinance and the HPC designation. That's just the five I can remember off the top of my head. I think there's even more than that. So, it's gonna be quite busy in July. So...
So, there's no zoning requests or anything that relate to our output until July thirteenth?
Yeah, the city council doesn't have a June meeting.
Ah.
Yeah.
Take a month off, huh?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
Interesting. Ron, one thing I, I would request, when you make a presentation to the council, I would like to see for sure comments from you about what the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended or denied. You do it usually, but not always. And I know in a couple of cases, council people have asked what is planning and zoning. So, I would, again, ask that you make sure you include that.
Yeah, it is on my mind. So, I'm, I'm trying to, to juggle some of the different things that they, I know that they need, or the things that I know that they want to hear up front, and that's one of them. So, I made a note, made a mental note to, to try to remember that for sure. So... I do make sure I have it on their city council sheets. I think I had a hiccup last time where I didn't have it on one of them. So...
Yeah, Matt had brought it up.
Yeah, yeah, he brought it up. He, he got me. He saw me. So, I totally forgot. Yeah, totally forgot on, on that one application. So, so I went back, corrected that cover sheet. So, I'll make sure I, I take note of that, and I do that.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
That's it.
Well, we have public comments. If our single resident would care to address the council?
You're the council now? You said, "Address the council."
Whoever we are, whenever we are. Okay.
All right. In that case, I move that we adjourn.
All approved. Say, raise your right hand. Okay.